...to order, it's 7:02 PM and we're calling the Castle Hills Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. This is the City of Castle Hills Zoning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM on October 23rd, 2018, at Castle Hills City Hall, City Council Chambers, at 209 Lemonwood Drive in Castle Hills. We do have a quorum present seated tonight, our Commissioners Aiken Bacon Baker, Bacon, sorry, Baker, and Chairman Isbrand. Item number two, consider approval of the October 3rd, 2018 zoning meeting minutes. Commissioners, you have that before you, and I'll just make the notation that it does reference in there, that the documents that we worked on at the last meeting are attached to these when they become public document. You just have the minutes from the actual meeting. Are there comments, additions, deletions? Hearing none, except a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Aiken.
I can motion or I can second.
Okay, we'll let Ms. Baker second.
So move or second.
Okay, Ms. Baker made the motion and Mr. Aiken seconded. All in favor, it's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, item number three is consider the recommendations from the Zoning Review Committee revising Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. The discussions will include lighting standards and parking regulations. For members of the public who are either here or watching tonight, as you know, we've been going through chapter by chapter, reviewing the recommendations that have come forward from the Zoning Review Committee. Ultimately, when we have completed this process, we will come back around to a final red line document for public and commission review before we vote to make a recommendation to the City Council. All right, to begin this, we certainly want to invite those of you who are in attendance tonight to participate, as you might have questions. So, we're going to open the public hearing on this as of 7:04 PM. Mr. Schnall, as Chairman of the Zoning Review Committee, would you kindly take us then through section 50, sorry, section 50-36?
Well, the, do I have it right? Yep. I have no idea if this is on or not, but I'll speak up. Well, there are two things to look at in regard to 50-36. One is the red line that Ms. Thalen put together that shows the one change that the Review Committee had recommended, which is just a minor change in subsection, what is listed in that red line as subsection C under vehicular area surfacing. What she has sent out in yesterday's email is something that I think she picked up from another city. I don't know for sure, but that's what it seems to look like to me. So, I think that the appropriate thing to do would be for everyone to look at the current text of 50-36 and see if there are any questions about that language.
So Commissioners, we'll give you a minute, and the public as well, a moment to review.
That's what Janet handed out, that's not what the committee came up with.
Mr. Schnall, I do have a question.
Yes.
This is on 50-36, number five, the Cooperative Parking Plan. I'm assuming that that, it says there, the agreement must be approved by the City Attorney, Zoning Commission, and the City Council. So, what that tells me is that there has to be an agreement between the two parties, and I would hope that that agreement is in writing.
Well, what you're looking at, which is what Ms. Thalen circulated, is not in our ordinance.
Right.
And it was not the proposal from the Zoning Review Committee. The proposal from the Zoning Review Committee was to maintain the language under 50-36 with one minor change. So, it seems to me that a cooperative parking plan, my view is it does not need the agreement of the City Attorney, the Zoning Commissioner, or the City Council. It's a private agreement between two neighboring property owners. And doesn't make sense to me that that needs to go before the City Council, or the Zoning Commission, or the City Attorney. That's a private agreement between neighboring property owners. So, I mean, the first I saw this was last night, when, well, really this morning, when I found it in my office, because I left it at the office last night instead of taking it home when it came. So, I just didn't think it was necessary to even have this in the zoning ordinance, that people can make agreements like that. I mean, I literally this afternoon sent out to a client a boundary line agreement to deal with the fact that her survey and her neighbor's survey did not agree on the location of a boundary, and a third surveyor has put together what appears to be a reasonable alternative, and I'm letting my client look at it. That's certainly not going to go before the City Council of the city in which those two properties are located. Nor would I expect a cooperative parking plan to have to come before this commission or the City Council, unless there were some other reasons that it would need to. For example, if one of those property owners was rezoning and didn't have adequate parking under the city code, they might be coming to the commission and therefore to the council to address that, or they might go to the Board of Adjustment to adjust that.
To that extent, I do think it's important that they have a written agreement, and if that becomes a basis of whether or not a variance or a change in zoning is granted, I think it's important that it be in writing, and then zoning should look at it, or the Board of Adjustment should see it, so that we have documentation so that we can approve what they're requesting.
I agree, that if they do need to come to either the Zoning Commission or the Board of Adjustment for approval of some different kind of approach, variance for the Board of Adjustment, for example, they should present in writing exactly what they want the city's commission to be looking at in order to make a decision on whether to grant a variance, for example. But, but my sense is that unless we know of a situation where this kind of cooperative parking plan is likely to be needed, that we don't need it in the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Schnall, is there anything in these recommendations here, let's call these restrictions, if you will, is there anything that would suddenly be permitted or active if we were not to adopt this language? I guess I'm very obtusely asking the question, is this language really necessary?
Which language?
The, the red line proposed, proposal that we've received here, the general parking requirements, E1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
E?
Yes.
Ah, okay. All right. Well, parking spaces shall not occupy any public land such as the public right-of-way of a street or alley. That is already the rule, essentially. This, this number two may not be in our ordinance, but I think it's common sense. If, if you're in a situation where you need X number of parking space, you need one parking space for every 200 square feet of office space, and you have not an even divider with 200, that, and therefore the calculation comes out that you need 8.3 parking spaces, you really need nine, and that's what a number two says. And incorporating that in the ordinance would be fine. I think that's exactly how staff and the permit people would interpret it. So, that language I don't believe is in our current ordinance. Number three, we, I think we cover almost any kind of parking requirement, but number three doesn't hurt, in case we didn't. The parking space requirements for use not specifically mentioned herein shall be the same as required for use of a similar nature. It does require some subjectivity as to what's a similar nature, but it doesn't trouble me if that went in here. Again, we'd be relying on the common sense of our permit officer or our staff in interpreting the ordinance. I think number four is covered in the current language about the number of spaces. We've talked about five of the Cooperative Parking Plan. Number six, I know Ms. Thalen was concerned about parking spaces being clearly marked, and when the paint for parking spaces fades, that the property owner be required to repaint the, restripe the parking area. That I don't think is currently in our ordinance. The question is, do we need it? And that I'll leave to y'alls discretion.
Is there any potential benefit, pardon the use of the phrase here, to memorializing some of this stuff which is already policy to better protect the city from challenge that, well, I want to do this part, cure, do this, that, or the other?
The more clarity you give staff in terms of what the intent of the governing body is, the better.
Okay. So then, I guess my last question on this is, these are not recommendations that came from the Zoning Review Committee?
They are not.
Yeah.
Ms. Thalen, I think what she has done, and Mr. Rapley can speak to her experience, but I think what she did is look around at what perhaps she determined were comparable cities, I don't know for sure, and tried to find some alternative language that would bring some new ideas into our ordinance. I am sorry that she isn't here this evening, I think she had a conflict, and, but I think that's where this came from.
I guess I'd like to propose that we keep most of the red lines for consideration next time, especially the number five. I would like to see it bumped up a little where it says that the Cooperative Parking Plan should be in writing, but like Mr. Schnall said, I think it needs to be clarified that that's when the parking plan agreement is going to be critical to whether or not a variance or a zoning change is granted.
Well, there probably are other areas. I think in the special use permit ordinance, for example, there is a long list of items that an applicant is required to provide, and I think the parking information is certainly part of that. I'm just concerned about us putting something in the ordinance that could be interpreted as being, going beyond what a city ought to be doing. We really don't want to get in between and in the middle of disputes between property owners, or in the middle of agreements between property owners. An applicant for a zoning change, or an applicant for a special use permit, has the burden of providing to the commission and then to the City Council the information that those bodies, your body and the council, want and expect to see. And if they fail to meet that burden, they're likely to not get the result they're looking for. And hopefully, there's enough information in our current ordinance that they'll understand that if they're going to need to have 15 parking spaces and their design only has 12, that they better come up with a plan as to what they're, how they're going to, to address that, whether it's by some agreement for off-street parking with another property owner, or whether it's through a variance. Certainly, there have been situations when property owners, whether they're neighbors or nearby, have entered into agreements to share parking churches, for example, on Christmas Eve. May not have a parking lot large enough for their attendance, and they make an arrangement with a neighboring property owner for their overflow parking.
I would agree that those aren't important for, to be in writing, or for the city to have knowledge of them, because those are rare events, but when you're looking at special use permit or a variance, I think it's important that the city and the Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment, have evidence of it in writing.
Absolutely, and that could be done by incorporating that kind of information in the information that's provided to an applicant for a zoning change, or an SUP, or a variance.
So, you think that's, it's better to do it there than to do it here?
I think it looks funny for the city to, by ordinance, embed itself in between two property owners who are trying to make an agreement.
So, Ms. Baker, I'm open if it's your suggestion to leaving it here for the time being, so that the full commission can look at this and like it noted that this, I guess I have some questions about whether some of this is needed, or if any of it's needed, and, I mean, I also have a reaction, just an aside, that on item six, it seems like a, feels like a tremendous overreach to me that we're now going to basically set ourselves up to go enforce whether you have painted your stripe, and when you painted it, and at what degree it becomes faded and not approved anymore. It just feels over, like overregulation to me. So, I have some questions about this, but I do think that if you see valid pieces of it, then we should leave it intact and leave it for the full commission to take up.
Leaving it for the full commission would be my preference.
Yeah. Ms. Aiken, you have any comments or thoughts on this piece?
I will, being the accountant that I am, I did notice that in number five, it says 600 and then parentheses, 300 feet, so that was my one comment that I picked up on, so I'd like to go on the record about that.
You're excellent at spotting that.
Right, so, but no, I'm fine with leaving it for the full commission.
Okay.
Yep.
So, then we'll leave all of this in for a later review as part of the full document. Are there any other questions for Mr. Schnall on this piece? So, on the next page is under the accessory buildings, which I guess I'm a little, I have a question, are, well, accessory buildings is under Chapter 50, okay. Is the comment of commission to discuss further to address larger lots, that would be item eight, or number eight, under the accessory buildings. Any accessory building larger than 120 square feet shall not be constructed of sheet metal. Does anyone know, or do we have any understanding of the origin on that one?
Yes, and it's part of a variance that we requested when we were putting in a barn, and the question was, we had more than two ABSUs on the property, but it's also 27 acres. So, the question of, it seemed restrictive to limit large properties to only two ABSUs when they've got more square footage. So, that's, that's why I think that's in there. So, I should probably, I don't know if I need to not vote, not, I certainly have a
So, this comment refers to just number eight, not to the full accessory buildings, the section F?
I don't recall that, that it was specifically with reference to whether or not the accessory building was of sheet metal.
Uh-huh.
I thought it was a more broad term.
So, this is referencing everything to section F, then? It appears to be.
It may have morphed down to just the question of metal construction versus the number of ABSUs per acreage, and I know Janet had discussed and researched what other cities had done, and that was more than a year ago, and I don't recall what, what her, her information revealed.
Mr. Schnall, unless you have any insight on this, I think we're going to have to hold on this, because I don't know what it is intended to reflect here.
Well, I think the commission's intent was a matter of aesthetics. The committees, excuse me, the committee's intent was aesthetics, that these buildings are near, they're generally in the back of the property, so they're relatively close to a property line, and some of them are, even with a four or six-foot fence, you can see them from the neighboring properties. And the concern was that people don't like to look at metal buildings. You know, the, the size of the lot on which the metal, on which the accessory building is located does make a difference. The other thing that could make a difference here is whether or not the accessory building is adequately shielded by some fence or wall that would alleviate this concern. But I think the committee's concern was that, that people living next door or across a fence from accessory building didn't want to look at a large accessory building that was all metal.
Okay, so this was the committee's comment here?
This is the committee's additional.
Okay, I probably should have asked you that to begin with, I apologize. So, then it is specific to item eight, and the construction, the materials for construction. So, in this case, it specifically says, based on the size, not constructed of sheet metal. Are there other definitions elsewhere of what is approved material?
I would have to look through the whole ordinance to answer that. Probably not. I don't, I don't recall.
As I recall, it, it does say that you cannot construct your accessory buildings, like sheds, out of sheet metal, and I think the only way around that is to get a variance.
But does it say you cannot, or you can construct it of sticks, of twigs, of adobe, of any, that's what I'm asking, is there some other constraint or parameters under which, so it only singles out that you can't do sheet metal, but anything else goes? So, adobe could go, or sticks for that matter?
Probably.
As currently. All right, so if you go to 50-65, it says, "Any accessory building larger than 120 square feet, constructed to serve a single or multifamily structure, must also be constructed of masonry to the extent of not less than 75% of the exterior overwall wall area, exclusive of window and door openings. The non-masonry exterior of a dwelling or accessory building may not be constructed of sheet metal." So, the new language under the ABSU is consistent with historically existing language from 1995 on construction materials.
Other comments? Anything, Mr. Aiken? All right, let's leave this notation in as well, and we'll, we'll bring it back. I'd like to, I'd like to suggest we do that, Ms. Baker, since you have acknowledged that you had a interest in this one, I think it would just be appropriate that before we make any final determination, we have a full, a majority, handle it that way? Thank you. All right.
Had an interest.
Had. Let me clarify, had, and 600 versus 300, I got that one, Ms. Aiken. Lighting standards.
So, the material that's marked subparagraph G comes from Ms. Thalen, I again, thinking that she is looking for some general standards that would be consistent with the way I think this commission operated in years past, I don't know about more recent years past, but in older years past, and one of my commissioners is sitting here in a red jacket next to me. Our concern as a zoning commission was that outdoor lighting be as, the least intrusive as possible on neighboring property, that, that light not shine from property A into property B's backyard, and things like that. The four subparagaphs in paragraph G that Ms. Thalen circulated yesterday appear to be consistent with that. Outdoor lighting designed to provide the minimum lighting necessary to ensure adequate safety, night vision, and comfort, and not create or cause excessive glare onto adjacent properties and public street rights of way. Number two, it must be hooded, shielded, and/or aimed downward. Any, number three, bright shining light, any bright light shining onto an adjacent property or streets that will result in a safety hazard is not permitted. Light trespass beyond property boundaries or above the horizontal plane shall be considered noncompliant. And then finally, when approved, accent lighting be directed downward onto the structure or object, and not toward the sky or adjacent properties. Those all seem fine to me, if they're fine to the commission. The committee did not discuss these, this comes from Ms. Thalen, but as I say, I think that historically zoning commissions have looked to understand that properties, particularly commercial properties, need to have adequate lighting for safety, but at the same time, neighboring commercial properties, and certainly not neighboring residential properties, should be unduly affected by that lighting. So, you know, it didn't come to the committee, but it certainly, you know, would be something to consider by this commission.
Ms. Baker?
Can you describe or explain what horizontal plane means on number three, under general lighting standards?
Horizontal.
Just want to make sure I understand what, what that means.
Well, I'm going to try and define it, and I'm going to suggest that we don't use that term. I would interpret the horizontal plane to be the, a line straight across from the highest point of the structure. Okay? And maybe that's a fair definition. I wish we had an architect in the room. Right, right. I think it's just consistent. But if there's a concern, we can certainly look at another phrase for horizontal plane, because Mr. Rapley's definition was different from mine.
Yeah, my preference would be is that everybody understands exactly what it means.
So, so...
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the rest of this, I mean, that sentence is superfluous. It doesn't need to be there. The point is made in, in the text of one and two, and in, in the first sentence of number three. So, you know, taking out words that seem to have question, a question about what they mean would be less confusing to everybody.
Okay, so are we open, am I getting too far ahead of myself, to strike that second set, second sentence of section three?
Yes.
Yep. Do you have other questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Aiken, anything?
No, I'm fine.
And did anyone have any discussion, comment regarding the notations on G General Business District, item C, the comments regarding remove clinic and create a, basically a greater definition there?
Where are we? Where are we?
Fifty, three fifty-one.
Fifty dash three fifty-one.
We are going to three fifty-one.
Back to street parking, off-street parking.
So. Yeah, I guess I have a is this, is this out of order, or am I just not seeing it? That we have parking, then we have accessory buildings, then lighting, and then parking? Oh, because we're into the definitions of the
She's just, she just, the first, the first things with, the things we've just talked about are all in the applies to all properties.
Right, I know, I got it, I saw it.
Now we're moving into the G General Business District and the minimum off-street parking requirements. And it, in reading the first ones, it looks like what Ms. Thayland has given us in yesterday's email is the current text with, with one comment on, on subpart C. And, and, and she did talk to me on the phone about this, I guess, yesterday. And, and her concern was that certain professional offices, particularly doctors and dentists, have patients coming back to back to back to back to back. And that those office uses may require more parking simply because they're booking four patients per hour, whereas other office uses don't have that kind of volume on a eight to five every day, or eight to six every day basis. So I think that was her point about changing this from the, getting rid of the, having some exception for clinics or medical office buildings. And if you were to agree with that, then we'd have to come up with a new subsection that would address parking for clinics and medical and dental offices. This might be a good time to ask Mr. Rapley if he's familiar with any of these uses where we've had some experience with any complaints about the adequacy of parking.
I'll ask. Is, do you have any experience? I don't, you're, you have, don't have a lot of longevity here in Castle Hills, but, you know, I've, I know that we have some new medical complexes that have come up, and parking was an issue. And they worked in a cooperative parking arrangement, just to be able to address the number of clientele they see every hour. So.
I'm trying to I'm, I'm trying to envision the scenario here where, are you aware of issues that we've had, either of you? That would, where this, this is a, are, are we addressing an issue that exists? Or are we trying to find a solution to a problem that does, hasn't happened?
I'm not personally aware of any real issues that have been raised, but that doesn't mean they, they aren't there. I, I don't know who would know, maybe.
I mean, as an example, and it may be a bad one, so pardon me, I'm just reacting to not having had a lot of time to look at this, is, so you go down to section K and you look at the requirements. This would include, for example, a vet. A minimum of one parking space per 200 or 250 square feet of waiting rooms and exam rooms, and plus one parking space per 800 square feet of all other areas. So what, it strikes me as, when I think of a vet's office, is the vet that's boarding or keeping animals in the back, or that's a bad way to say, but keeping animals, it's like, who are we putting these parking spaces, requiring these parking spaces for? And I don't know what, a medical, dental, optometrist may be different, and this may be very much warranted, but when I try to start thinking of it, at least in terms of it, I'm just not understanding why we would feel it's necessary to add this additional burden on them in terms of parking space for accessory space they have in their, in their facility.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, 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 I found your comment about, is, are we trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist, to be extremely cogent, and that there are ways to address this if we leave the ordinance the way it is. By simply, if, if there are complaints, the city addresses the complaints. That may not be the best approach, but it sure sounded cogent to me. Especially if Mr. Rapley is not aware of any prior complaints. I know that the, the orthodontist that my children went to, which is located in Castle Hills, had a very lovely parking lot, and it was very adequate for their practice. I never counted the number of parking spaces, 'cause I always found one.
Okay. So if, if that's the case, then we would just leave this as is again until we get greater clarification on it?
I would ask Mr. Rapley, when he has that discussion, if the answer is yes, there is an experience that would merit a change, if we could get some specific recommended language for the commission to consider.
That would be great.
So that, you know, we don't have to, to spend a long time debating this issue. It seems pretty straightforward. If there's a problem, we'll figure out a way to address it. I mean, there's something in here about restaurants needing to have one parking space for 100 square feet of gross floor area. And there's another section with similar, more parking spaces required language. If we're gonna do something, let's get a specific require, request, or suggestion from staff, which I think will make the job of the commission a little easier.
Okay. Okay. I'll admit, I am a little bit sad, members, because in the 18 years of known and worked with Mr. Schnall, I've never had him use the phrase extremely cogent in any sentence related to me. So I was hoping we might have something here, but anyhow.
We should probably adjourn.
I believe that's on tape, too, Mr. Osbry.
All right, are there other questions, comments, members, anything else related to this? Mr. Schnall, any other comments that you'd like to provide us or counsel on this section?
No, no, sir. I, I will say that, you know, as, as I think we both commented on at previous meetings of this commission on this subject, that the work product of the committee was something that the committee members took very seriously. We took a long time, we took a few months longer than the mayor had asked us to take. But we felt that we had provided to the commission a good working document with reasonable changes that would help the commission and help the city going forward. The edits that the commission has done so far have, for the most part, been consistent with that, with that task. And I appreciate the work that the commission does in reviewing this and taking the time that, like the committee took, to seriously look at this and hopefully bring a product to the city council that we'll all be proud of.
Well, and likewise, as you know, we, we share the, a great appreciation for the work that the committee has done. I think the fact that the commission has not moved as swiftly as it could on this, in a way, wasn't a bad thing, because although it's probably a little bit of a microcosm, it's already, you know, an examination of does this withstand the test of time? And we have seen some things in the course even of our discussions that have raised some questions about where it does, where it doesn't. But the body of work that was brought forward to this by the zoning review committee was exceptional. And I'm, I'm grateful, Mr. Schnall, to you and to all the members for, for your work there. Before we close the public, did you have something? Not on this one, right? Yeah, another, okay, oh, okay. So before we close the public hearing, then let me just ask if there's any other comments from anyone on this? Anyone like to comment? Thank you very much. All right, then at 7:43 PM, we'll close the public hearing. Members, our regularly scheduled meeting in November, we'll have other items on it that will be coming before us. And then we're hopeful that we can set another meeting in November to, Mr. Schnall, this now completes all of the work that the committee has brought to us. So we've gone from beginning to end on this. So what we would then like to do is bring back a completed red line document with the changes that either the committee has recommended, that we have recommended, those areas where we have questions about them, and those areas that we want to revisit. That's probably gonna be, has the potential to be a rather lengthy discussion, but I think it's really important that, you know, we've, we've looked at these sort of like as bricks, building it piece by piece, but it's important next, I think, to look at the whole house and assure that it's, it's a well-built structure. So that, that would be what we would attempt to do in November, and if needed, to December. But to get then a recommendation to move to council as quickly as possible, so we can complete this work. Any comments, anything else? Minnie, do you recall, did, I don't know if Janet left notes on it. No, November 6th is our regularly scheduled meeting. And then we had talked about, I didn't bring my packet with me, Mr. Schnall?
My calendar says that you were gonna meet at 7 o'clock on Wednesday, the 14th.
The 14th, that's right.
And then that if, if a further meeting was gonna be needed, it was gonna be on Tuesday, December 4th. Which is the first Tuesday of the month, that's the normal meeting date for the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, so November
November the 6th, Ms. Jaffet is asking, November, November the 6th, the commission has two action items
Right.
from applicants for zoning type consideration. So rather than have that meeting be longer than it needs to be, they wanted to have the final review of the zoning review committee's recommendations, plus going back on, as I recall, the only two things you were gonna go back on that were identified at the last month, at the meeting a few weeks ago, were home occupations and short-term rentals.
Correct.
But, but like you said, once people see a red line, they may be able to raise, may want to identify other issues.
Right.
Be useful, both for compliance with the Open Meetings Act and for the commission. If, if any member of the commission has specific other items they're going to want to discuss at, at a meeting in November, whether it's the 14th or a different date, that those items be identified to Ms. Thayland or Mr. Rapley, so that the agenda can so inform the public.
Did I read in the paper, our newspaper, November the 6th, the commission was to meet on some S U P?
Yeah, that's, that meeting is still on.
That is on for the 6th. Well, you didn't mention that date.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, that's, that's the regular commission meeting on November 6th. And there will be whatever's on their agenda.
Right.
It just won't be me.
Right, so, so to restate this for the, the benefit of the record, November 6th is our next regularly scheduled meeting. There will be other items on the agenda for us to address there. So the next time that we will pick up on the review of the zoning ordinance with the full red line copy will be on November 14th. And I think Mr. Schnall's point is well taken. And since we have, although we have a quorum, we don't have a fully seated commission here, I think it will be important to try to communicate to them if there are other specific items that they want to bring forward at that, to submit it to the city expeditiously, so that our public notice on it fully reflects what we intend to deliberate at that time.
And I, I want to stand to correct myself, that in addition to home occupations and short-term rentals, because the commission did not make a final recommendation on either parking or lighting,
Right.
those items ought to also be specifically noted as, as being subjects that will be discussed at the second meeting in November.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, we're good? Everyone has all their November meetings scheduled? All right, my thanks to everyone who attended tonight for their interest, to city staff for your fine work, we greatly appreciate it. Again, to Mr. Schnall, you and your committee, and members, thank you for being here, and we're adjourned at 7:49 PM.